I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anyone here that would like to address the board when we reach that part? Okay, first order of business, approve the minutes of November 29th, 2012, regular meeting of the Board of Education into December 15th, 2012 work session. Would there be a motion to approve the minutes of those meetings?
So moved.
Is there any additions or corrections? Roll call, please. Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Mr. Mertes?
Yes.
The next item on our agenda is to approve the treasurer's financial report.
In your packet, I've got a summary for you, cover sheet. As we discussed Saturday at the work session, some of the, I guess, more important items, plan out the enrollment trend, increase of thirty-some students continues to have a significant impact on the cash balance of the district. I included kind of a new report, I know this hadn't been included in the past, but I like to be a thin sum, I'll call it. It's a financial summary of all funds in the district. Picture, if you will, month-to-date, fiscal-to-date, year-to-date, calendar-to-date, current fund balance, income encumbrances, and then the remaining fund balance. Probably the one I pay the most attention to would be the general fund 001. Currently, we have an unencumbered balance of just north of $4 million. Went through and looked year-to-date where we stood in all funds versus general. Year-to-date, we're about $865,000 more expenses than revenue when we look at all of our funds. That's athletics, student grants, general, et cetera. When you look at just the general fund, we're actually to the positive $167,000 more in revenue than expenses. So we're about halfway through the year and we're still positive in general funds. So I think the administrative team has done a real good job balancing cuts and revenue with that. So the trend is positive. We still need to be vigilant with the forecast and we've seen that it looks good so far.
Questions? Questions for Ryan?
That's good news.
Kudos to our administrative team for being vision of our expenditures. Would there be a motion to approve the treasurer's financial report?
So moved.
Mr. Stone?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Mertes? Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Mertes?
Yes.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Stone?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Next item is to approve the addendum to the agenda, which you did receive. And there are several items that we need to add. If you look at that addendum, item B under the numeral X needs to be added. And under the business section of the agenda, being asked to replace item G with the, item G is on the addendum, as well as add items J and K. And I didn't really see any difference between item G on the old agenda and item G on the new agenda. Is there a change in the actual exhibit?
Yes, there's a change in the exhibit.
Would there be a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Schiefer?
Second.
Mrs. Stone, any discussion on that? Roll call. Mrs. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Mertes?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson? Yes. Next item on the agenda are commendations, and we have one tonight for Matt Music, our student representative of the Board of Education. Mr. Kimmel?
Matt, want to come join me? On behalf of Besar State, we have to smile pretty for the camera here. On behalf of Besar State School District Board of Education, I'd like to present you with this certificate for representing the Board of Education for a semester of the school year. Thank you very much for your time and efforts.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Although Matt's time with the board was short, since August, he has represented the student body very well. Has been professional with his reports, and I want to thank him for his time. And tonight, this is his last meeting, so I would ask you that you also take your name placard there with you, slide it out of the sleeve, and take that as a remembrance of serving on the board. So best of luck.
Thank you. Next on the agenda are committee reports, legislative report. Mr. Stone?
Yes, sir. House Bill 555, which changes the grading system for districts, has made its fast track through the House of Representatives and seems to be on a quick track to the Senate, not the Senate, but the governor's desk. House Bill 555 basically changes the rating system from effective continuous improvement to a grade letter for each school district, A through F. What I found to be most, we use the word interesting, about the new rating system is there are a lot of variables that school districts have to take into account in their rating that they don't have any control over. For instance, participation and average scores in national standardized college admissions testing, participation in dual enrollment programs and advanced placement program. Those things we really don't have, those are choices that students make. We don't have a say in that, but we will be graded upon as part of the compilation score. So it'll be interesting to see how that unfolds in the year to come. The other issue I've taken with the legislation is in the midst of all these other changes with Senate Bill 316, House Bill 555 wants to be, seems to be implemented in this school year. So that seems to be the biggest issue in Ohio legislation. Obviously, the attorney general's come out with the tragic incident in Connecticut and has asked schools to look at their security measures and look back and make sure that we are being as safe a place for kids as we possibly can. I believe we had a great discussion about that topic at the work session. And I think Besar does as much as can be done under those circumstances. That is my report.
Thank you. Athletics, Mr. Schiefer?
Yeah, first, I'd just like to thank the community for those who came out and supported our Dying to Make a Difference at Bob Evans this past Monday, proceeds that will go to support our athletic boosters. And also, I apologize for missing our last athletic council meeting. And Dr. Johnson, if you were superintendent, have it, in regards to that, we appreciate it. And lastly, with our Christmas break coming up, just want to wish our student athletes and coaches and all Besar's family, school district a Merry Christmas and safe and prosperous.
Pioneer, Mrs. Stone?
We met Monday. It was a very short end of the meeting. It was just mostly business as usual for December, so nothing really stood out.
Well, Ms., Mr. Mertes?
I had the opportunity to sit down with Lori Pennington, spend some time with her. And she's not here, but I wanted to thank her for taking time after her day to meet with me and kind of bring me up to speed. I was surprised at the breadth of the programs that are dealt with in that committee. And a couple of things that she touched on was, first and foremost, the concern of the increasing percentage of free and reduced lunches. It's creeping up to 75 percent. So we talked a little bit about that. Wellness Day is still set for March 11th, apparently, as Speaker's been lined up for that day. The administration likely knows this, but there's no backpack program over the Christmas break because of some circumstances with the Salvation Army. And all the participants, which total 131 now, were notified of that. Notified of the alternatives for food. That program will likely move to the Lincoln Building and looking for volunteers to help pack the meals. She mentioned that they want to look at lining up local businesses, civic organizations, as well as student organizations to help out. And finally, I guess Santa came to lunch today. And the students were given Christmas cookies as a gift on behalf of the family in Consumer Science Class that decorated them. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. And our student representative, Mr. Music, your last opportunity.
Thank all of you for having me. And I guess I was so excited for my last one that I showed up a half hour early. Well, anyway, a lot of the students have been taking trips. The band just got back from Disney, the art club went to the Florence Museum of Art and CCAD. And the anatomy classes also went to COSI this week. So a lot of classes have been more empty than usual. But next school week, exams, I'm sure they'll be busy again. And we also have grand year games tomorrow, if there are no cancellations. But everyone's counting on to our way.
We all have to tell a guy that we make those decisions.
Either way, you win them all, kind of.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Well, I wanted to bring to the board's attention and to Matt's attention, I know one of the first things that Matt brought to the attention of the board was some student concerns over the new USDA regulations and portion sizes and choices and whole grains versus whatever other kind of grain there is. And I just want to bring to your attention that, you know, your voice was heard. And the USDA did, in fact, loosen up the regulations on serving of protein, meat, and grains. So, you know, it takes a lot of courage for students and their representatives to come to this board and voice grievances. But that's the only way they get addressed. And so whether your voice was heard directly or indirectly, I think it did make a difference. So you congratulate me for that. Superintendent's report. I know Mr. Kimmel is going to speak about student safety, but before he says that, I'd just like to say there is no greater concern or priority that this Board of Education has than for the safety and security of its students and its staff. There are lots of obvious reasons for that, but not the least of which is the fact that if students don't feel safe and secure, they're not going to learn very well. And if teachers don't feel safe and secure, they're not going to teach very well. And so I asked Mr. Kimmel tonight if he would just briefly review some of the things that we've been discussing. You know, I think as a nation, we need to address this issue of gun violence. I'm not sure what the answers are. But I hope this doesn't pass in several weeks. You know, if the innocent slaughter of 21st graders doesn't compel us to take some action in this regard as a nation, as a community, as a state, I don't think anything ever will. So if you're concerned, get involved, contact your congressman, and let them know how you feel about this. But it's time for us to address this issue. With that, Mr. Kimmel?
Thanks, Dr. Johnson. The tragic events from Friday really started with a visit, as soon as I heard the news, to the elementary school. This fellow needed to be down there, and we had a planned pep rally for our elementary kids, a winter sports pep rally that was planned and went off without a hitch and was a wonderful event. But Mr. Rol did receive a phone call that afternoon and a question of concerned parent about the safety of our students and their procedures of people getting buzzed in the building. And Mr. Rol was, as I walked in, was reviewing those procedures with Mrs. Hill and the staff at the front office. And I appreciate him basically dropping everything he could do and making sure that he addressed the concerns of the parent and the needs of the students. And the pep rally went without a hitch. But through Friday night and then our work session on Saturday and Sunday, and communicating with Mr. Rol, Mr. Henderson over the weekend, plans were put in place to try to operate school as normal as possible come Monday. You understand that we have a wide range of student ages and different ages call for different ways of handling a crisis like this. What was appropriate may be the secondary building, working with the staff and students to be different than what we needed to do and provide for our elementary students. As students spent time during the weekend with their families, there was a wide range of families that shielded their kids from any and all news related to the shooting and did not expect the school district to educate the students on that crisis. And then the other range of students who probably spent most of the weekend in front of the TV with their parents hearing about what was going on and would want to talk about that when they stepped into the school building on Monday morning. So it created quite a bit of a challenge. And through meeting with administrative staff, Monday morning before the staff got there, Mr. Rol had an all-staff meeting before the students showed up, called his staff in 15, 20 minutes early. We met, then met with the teachers, and really the message was we needed to be more listeners than talkers on Monday and acknowledge that, yes, a tragic event took place, but not try to retell the details of the events. Our staff handled it very professionally. We had support staff ready to serve the students' needs, guidance counselor, school psych, administration, Crawford County Trauma Team on call. So there's a lot of people in place if the students needed that outlet to discuss it more on a one-on-one setting than really taking over the class period. Staff handled it wonderfully throughout the school day, checked in at both buildings. The school day went without a hitch. We had a handful of students that parents decided to keep their kids home. Right away, I excused those absences and made sure that they knew that we understood their concern. We encouraged them after a day or two to return to the school. To my knowledge, all of them have returned their students to school. And the phone calls have been cut down dramatically each day that we've gotten into this week. And I want to say, without a hitch, school has been going off as normal as possible. It's caused us great reflection on what we're doing in the school building to see if we provide the, are providing best or the safest environment for our students. As Dr. Johnson mentioned, we don't have a higher degree of responsibility than protecting us and providing a safe environment for our students. Tuesday night, I had an opportunity to speak to city council and the mayor regarding the things that we're doing, and it was a great discussion. I want to thank the local police department for providing extra security, extra presence throughout the school grounds, both in vehicle and on foot this week, especially Monday. They were a huge asset. Between John Beal and Ken Teetz, we were speaking daily throughout the day and making sure things behind the scenes were going as smooth as possible. They were receiving calls about whether we're, everything's safe in Besar. I was receiving calls, the building principals were receiving calls. And I want to say that I think people's nerves were very heightened Monday into Tuesday, but that's kind of settled a little bit. But through this all, it causes us to still have reflection on forward, doing everything we can in our powers. We've had trainings with the local authorities, we've had active shooter training with our teachers. We've had lockdown drills, we've done those drill, we lock our buildings down during school day with regards to outside people getting in. But there's, you know, you never want to cut a corner when it comes to student safety. The Crawford County Sheriff's Department has instituted a program called the 360 Program, where they have a digital picture of every corner, inside and outside of all our buildings. I worked with Officer Chad Affiliator with the Sheriff's Department to, throughout the last spring and into the fall, make sure that all of our buildings are secure as possible. So there's a lot of things going on behind the scenes that I know folks don't see, but safety is a top concern for us. Going forward, you know, we have submitted all the necessary documents with the state of Ohio and making sure that our four plans and safety plans have been submitted, but submitted. But those are always, there's always an opportunity to get those back out, review those, make sure everybody's familiar with the procedures if we were to have an incident that we needed to address. There's a ton of resources coming our way. Sheriff Shawburn has been contacted by another county sheriff's department that's offered to come in and do some additional training for a crisis at free of charge to our staff. I've put us on that list to get that training. There's more school guides coming out with references to take a look at and work with our staff and make sure that we have our school crisis guide in place. I could speak for the next three hours on things that are going on, but I just want to reassure everybody that our staff has done an amazing job keeping the business of educating kids at the forefront. And I guess I'd just encourage anybody if they have any questions about our security or the safety of our buildings, to don't hesitate to give a phone and give a call. On the flip side, switching gears, tonight, we are hopefully going to be approving or ratifying a tentative agreement with our support staff tonight. I just, I can't thank them enough for stepping up and being professional through negotiations. We have a very hard-working support staff that numbers about 58, 56 staff members. And it includes bus drivers, aides, secretaries, custodians, building maintenance. You know, there's a bunch of people that are, that live in Besar, work with our kids every day, do a tremendous job. And so it's good to come to an agreement with them that, you know, it, there was huge contributions on their behalf to help with the deficit that we have in our district. And that is to be acknowledged, their hard work and dedication to the school district is duly noted. You know, this is coming off the heels of cutting a lot of money, 1.6 million last year, 34 positions. And the climate right now is not such that we can go out and provide any type of raises, even though these people deserve raises. But to acknowledge that we need, that they're being willing to give back in order to keep operations going for the sake of our kids is duly noted and very much appreciated. That ends my report. If there's any questions?
Questions for Mr. Kimmel? Again, I don't believe there's anybody out there that wants to address the board at this time. Next item on the agenda, personnel certified staff. Mr. Kimmel, please.
Yes, my recommendation at the Board of Education, approve items A and B under the personnel certified staff section.
Would there be a motion to approve those items?
So moved.
Mrs. Stone?
There'd be a second.
Second.
Mr. Stone, any discussion regarding those items? Hearing none, roll call, please. Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mrs. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Mertes?
Yes.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson? Yes. Personnel classified staff, Mr. Kimmel?
Yes, my recommendation at the Board of Education, approve item A under the personnel classified staff section of the agenda.
Is there a B? Yes, there is.
Okay, my apologies. To approve items A and B underneath the classified personnel section.
Would there be a motion to approve those items? Mr. Schiefer?
Second.
Mrs. Stone, discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please. Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Mertes?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
And business items, Mr. Kimmel?
Yes, it's my recommendation that the Board of Education approve items A through K under the business section, which includes the replacement of item G from the addendum and also the additional items J and K from the addendum.
Would there be a motion to approve those items?
So moved.
Mr. Mertes?
Support.
Mr. Schiefer? Discussion?
I guess I'll echo Superintendent's comments to Besar's boss, ratifying their contract and what they did to pull their membership and support the hard times that we are having in the district. And if it goes above standard, it's very much appreciated. So, thank you.
Any other comments, discussion, questions?
Going through the negotiations was tough. It was a tough time for all of us. But I don't think any of us, once we're done with it, are real, you know, happy about the situation that we're all in. But we so appreciate what you guys did and how you helped us get a deal and to keep this district going. It was very much appreciated, very much. We spent some long hours and a lot, a lot, I wonder how many times we did meet? It was a lot, but I mean, and you guys take time out of your time to do that, too. So very much appreciated.
It was my first negotiations experience and I, it was a real pleasure working with folks who were so professional. The word sacrifice comes to mind. You know, just what your folks show is remarkable and it's a testament to what you do every day in those buildings. And we thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none, roll call, please. Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Mr. Mertes?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Next item, there are several items for discussion. Mr. Kimmel?
The new policy that you have in front of you tonight is kind of a catch-up from what we discussed last month. The reason why this was not part of your packet last month is there was quite a bit of work that needed to be done with Mr. Baines with regards to the technology piece of it. I want to say some of the, some of the items in front of you are, we're going to be actually not recommending for approval because, for example, the first item, 7530, we do not have any board-owned personal communication devices. We won't provide any cell phones for any of our workers, so that's a non-issue. But some of the other sections, it talks about, even with, even though this is my own personal device, if I receive school email through this, I must have, there's a policy in place to take care of because there's student information on my personal device. So in other words, it has to be locked. And if it's, in order to abide by this board policy, if this is approved at next month's meeting, I'll have to send something out to all of our school staff and let them know that their phone will need to be locked. If at what, if at any point a staffer would leave the district, this device would need to be checked by our technical tech person, network technician to make sure that it's clean of all student data before leaving the district. So it's just really tightening up the policy because of the day and age of a lot of laptops, tablets, cell phones being brought into the district.
Does that come with a change in, I mean, even contractual obligations? I mean, that's somebody's personal property that you're ultimately going to be checking. You have to at least sign off on.
Well, there will be, there will be a, it'll be part of the acceptable use policy that our staff signs. In order to receive school emails on your cellphone, you have to have it kind of set up by our network technician anyhow. So we're talking about having a form that a staffer will sign so that they know that it'll have to be locked. And then if at any time that they leave the district, it'll have to be checked before they leave the district and cleaned, they scrubbed or whatever, sure they leave. Yeah, we're muddying through that. It's, It's, you know, you don't think about those types of things, but as these devices are becoming more and more common, the policy pieces of it is actually trying to catch up to what's already actually taking place. So, you know, I'd just encourage you to go through those, most of them. You can read the changes that we've made or the suggestions that we've offered, and then we'll be looking to vote on those and approve those policy changes at the January board.
Is that policy going to be a common one across districts?
Yeah, there's some flexibility based on what school districts provide. That's why you'll see different options, and it basically boils down to, is, you know, some school districts may provide school-owned cell phones, we don't, so that the changes, even though it's, I won't say it's a boilerplate, but it is a boilerplate if, depending on what you're currently doing in the district.
I know the movement towards, you know, bring your own device has lots of advantages for learning, but with that comes lots of potential liability.
And I think you've seen, you know, some of those issues, you've been locally hearing this within the media. So, folks have to continually be reminded of the responsibility that comes along with bringing your own devices to school.
And the boundaries between home and school and the community get more and more blurred. Any other thoughts, comments? I guess we're not, you're not asking this to?
No, we're not asking to approve tonight. Like I said, it does go along with the policies that you did approve tonight, but I do want to give you an opportunity to go through those over the next few weeks, and if you have any questions, we'll try to answer those for you.
Okay, item B, we need to have an organizational meeting by law, but it's before January 15?
15, yeah.
And so, we're looking for a date before the 15th. I was wondering what the 10th looked like, that's a Thursday.
We all get out our phones.
There is a home boys' basketball game that I look at Central, but depending on the time, you know, that everybody can work out, maybe we'll keep a little first and same time, depending on the time. So, you're going to be, have to be a quick.
I'd rather have another date than than to do that, although it does get difficult.
It just depends also if you want to have your organizational meeting in the regular time and the same night.
The 14th, that would be right there.
There is no school that day, that's President's Day or Martin Luther Committee, I mean.
Yeah, it's fine. Okay. Regular time earlier?
What's the pleasure of the board?
Have a little bit earlier and do both?
We could do 5:30.
And do the organizational, followed by the regular January meeting, and be done. Does that work with your?
Sure.
Okay. All right, then we'll set that for 5:30 on the 14th of January for our organizational meeting and our regular meeting. Any other communications, announcements, any of that sort? Again, I'd like to commend all our staff for their working with our children this week. Again, especially trying times, and I'd like to congratulate our staff on doing a good job. Would there be a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing security matters? Mr. Schiefer?
Second.
Mrs. Stone? Roll call? Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Mr. Murtagh?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Yes. What? How? What's going on? Yeah.